Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 1st City Council Meeting 2017. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and Chief, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney.
Faria.
Here.
Johnson Santos.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Silveira.
Present.
Vol- Volta.
Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Before there's a motion, I would like to remove Item 11, the closed-session item conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property located at 1111 G Street, Los Banos, California, APN 026161003, 026161008, portion, approximately 6.4 acres. City negotiators, City Manager Tarazas, City Attorney Vaughn, Finance Director Williams, Police Chief Prezy, negotiating parties, Sam Watson, under negotiation, purchase price and terms of sale. It will be rescheduled to a later date, and with that, Mr. Vaughn, do you mind to make a comment?
I would just say that we are working on it, but we're just not quite ready to present anything new to you tonight, but we're hoping to have something to you on the 15th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Freya.
With that, I'd like to move to approve the agenda minus Item 11, as read by title.
Okay. Mr. Silveira.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Freya, second by Mr. Silveira, to approve the agenda stated minus Item 11. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Okay. Let's go on to consideration...oh, we did that. Okay. Let's go on to Item 5, Public Forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome to February, after a very productive January. I forgot to introduce myself, birth of Real Las Banas Chamber of Commerce. After a very productive January, the Chamber is looking forward to the upcoming year. We have welcomed six new members since my last visit to council. Castro Business Services offers mobile notary public service as well as loan signing. Lupi Castro can be reached at 752-2583. Kares Consulting with Dr. Nico de Paz comes to Los Banos to provide much-needed help to parents of children with autism and to support them in their journey. Kares Consulting is hosting a special movie event for families of children with autism on Saturday, February 18th, beginning at 9:30 at Premier Cinemas. This is a safe space for your child to be themselves and enjoy a movie however they feel comfortable. To contact Kares Consulting, you can visit their website at www.ASDcares.com or call 489-6315. We also welcomed Hotel Mission de Oro in Antonella. They kicked off their membership by offering a photo contest, with the winner being spotlighted on their website, as well as receiving a complimentary stay at the hotel. PMZ Real Estate also has joined us, with local agent Jeanette Boyd offering her hometown knowledge and cheerful ambition to serve you. Jeanette can be reached by calling 675-3634. Central Valley Geeks also joined us from right up the street. Dave Hoag owns and operates this Los Banos business at 924 Sixth Street, and has been serving Los Banos and the surrounding communities for over 11 years. And last, but certainly not least, Operation Packing Company Incorporated, presented by the original Shiners, Moonshine Bandits, and Shiner Nation. Operation Packing Company is dedicated to the collection, organization, packing, and sending of care packages to our soldiers overseas. To donate items for shipment or for more information, visit operationpackingcompany.org. You have until Friday to order your delicious Marie Calendar pies from the Los Banos Kiwanis Club during their Valentine's Day Pie Sale. Call any Kiwanis member to place your order for $13, and they can be picked up at the Miller and Lux Building on February 14th. We held our first ribbon-cutting of the year on Thursday. Grid Alternatives celebrated their membership by hosting the January Mixer in our Chamber Office. Grid Alternatives is a 501(c)(3) certified nonprofit organization that brings together community partners, volunteers, and trainees to implement solar power and energy efficiency for low-income families. And today, happening right now, a longstanding local tradition in Los Banos celebrates their 50th anniversary. España's Restaurant will be bringing back their 1967 menu for this sold-out event. I'm told they're expecting over 500 people to visit the landmark this evening. The Chamber would like to thank España's and the Amabel family for their longtime Chamber membership, as well as their combined service for the community. Tomorrow, we will welcome Sutter Rural Clinic with a ribbon-cutting at 4:00 p.m. This much-needed location will better serve our community. They are located at 1253 West I Street. Then on Friday, we'll join Sheila Manese and her staff at West Coast Raisin Sprays as they celebrate a ribbon-cutting to launch a new service, Aesthetics by Cindy, at 11:00 a.m. West Coast Raisin Sprays is located at 2220 East Pacheco, and they will also host an open house on Saturday, February 11th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. The weekend of February 18th and 19th is sign-ups for Tiger Youth Football, and they will be in the parking lot from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then on February 18th, Anse McLean and the Trailer Park Troubadours will visit the Los Banos Arts Council at 7:00 p.m. Get your tickets before they sell out. And until next time, thank you.
You'll let the owner of España's know why we're not there right now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. All right. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at the public forum? Anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to Item 6, Consideration of Approval Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we vote on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a council member. Tonight, we have, Director Maloney.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 202794 through 203035, in the amount of $692,608.07. Minutes for the January 4th, 2017 City Council Meeting. Minutes for the January 18th, 2017 City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5834, amending Division 4 salary schedule, employee classifications relating to changes to Section E, Public Works. City Council Resolution Number 5835, approving a boundary map and declaring its intention to annex property to the City of Los Banos Community Facilities District Number 2000-01, Public Safety Services, and to levy a special tax therein to finance certain public safety services for such Community Facilities District. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove Item D.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the consent agenda minus Item D, as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Freya.
I'll second that.
Motion by Lewis, second by Faria, to approve the consent agenda A, B, C, and E, as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it looks like we're going to be hiring a new employee to take over janitorial services, and in our report, it has indicated what the position will cost us. The information that I would like our financial staff to impart is, what was the contract for the janitorial services that we were receiving? The cost of the contract.
So, we have actually two separate contracts with two different companies. One, for work on City Hall, is over $14,000, is about $14,400. The other contract includes the Miller and Lux Building, the Child Development Center, and Madison, and that's about $19,700 for the year for that contract. This just includes the regular cleaning, and it doesn't include if we have them do additional services, so obviously the charges could get a little, be a little bit more. And then, the new person would also be responsible for cleaning F Street, and currently, that building is the corporate, F Street is cleaned by a part-time person, who, that position is going away also in a decision we made at an earlier council meeting, and that's probably around $300 more a month. So, in total, all of the buildings put together is $37,000, $38,000 without extra deep cleaning.
That, that's with the current contract?
Yes, the current, the current contracts, yes.
Okay. And the $42,000, does that include benefits, or is that just the salary?
Yes, that's it. No, that's the salary and the estimated benefits based on the highest assumption, so I, we always do the family plus, or the employee plus family members, just to get a higher estimate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item D on the consent agenda, as submitted.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Freya, to approve Item D on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Let's go on to Item 7, Consideration of Adoption of City Council Resolution Number 5836, Accepting the 2015-2016 Fiscal Year Audit Reports, Consisting of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, the Government Auditing Standards Report, and the Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Program Financial Statements. And we're going to go to Finance Director Williams.
So, first, I'd like to thank my staff, which would include Kim Tamas, who's here tonight, and Rosemary Sato, who's not here, and the staff at Price &amp; Page for all the hard work that they do annually. Kim and Rosemary work really hard with the auditors to make sure that we have a very efficient and somewhat effortless audit. But each year, the city has a financial audit performed by an independent certified public accounting firm, which is Price, Page, and Company, and they have been doing it for the last few years. The city, again this year, received an unqualified opinion, which indicates that the auditors believe the financial statements present a fair picture of the financial position of the city, and the independent auditor's report states that the audit did not identify any deficiencies considered to be material misstatements, and so basically, there are no findings to our report. And tonight, Foster, a managing partner with Price, Page, and Company, will be presenting the audit reports, and will be present to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to share the results of the audit. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for that introduction and for sharing some of the more important points with respect to the audited financial statements. I'm going to take just a few minutes and don't expect to go into any great detail. The document, as you probably have seen, is, I think, 110 pages, or close to that. But there are certainly a few important things here that I'd like to point out, and I'm going to start with our auditor's report, which is page 1 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And as Ms. Williams shared, you do have an unmodified audit opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best opinion that the city can receive, but there are a few things in this report that I'd like to just share with you. First of all, there's a paragraph that says management's responsibility for the financial statements. I always like to point that out, that management is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements. Our job as auditors, then, is to express an opinion as to whether the way that management has accounted for the transactions of the city, whether that's in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. But it's management's job certainly to get that accounting right, and so that's important to know. The other part of that first, that management responsibility paragraph, talks about internal control. And so, again, that's management's responsibility to make sure that there is a functioning, effective internal control system. And internal control is a broad concept, and so a lot of times, we might think of very specific things, like two signatures on a check, or those sorts of things, but also there is a broader concept to internal control with respect to governance. And so, for example, your oversight of management and your review of warrants before they're delivered, those sorts of things also are a part of that internal control system, however you've delegated that internal control process to management. So, we are not a part of your internal control system. We're, we're outside of that. However, our responsibility as auditors, I said, is to look at the numbers, but beyond that, is to look at that internal control system. If we identify any deficiencies in that internal control system that are significant, then we're required to report those to you. As Ms. Williams shared, we have no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses within that internal control system that need to be reported to you. So, our responsibility as auditors also includes performing a risk assessment. There are too many transactions, there's no way that we can look at 100% of them. Actually, we could, but then we'd be here all year, looking at, at transactions all year, and so that's not cost-effective. So, there is an audit process, and there are auditing standards that are promulgated by the American Institute of CPAs. They tell us, these are the auditing rules. If you follow these rules, then at the end of your audit work, you can issue an audit opinion with respect to whether the financial statements are fairly presented. And so, a big part of that is this risk assessment process. What we do is, we start, we start the process by trying to identify what can go wrong, and we're focused on two things. We're focused on errors, and we're focused on fraud. What can go wrong? Where can it go wrong? What are the opportunities that exist in the system for people to do something that they shouldn't be doing? What are the threats? Those sorts of things. And so, we conduct that risk assessment process in various ways. One of them is by walking through certain internal controls, by making inquiries, by making fraud inquiries, by talking to somebody over here to corroborate what somebody over here said. And so, we go through that entire process. The end product of that process, then, is to prioritize those areas of greatest risk. Once we've done that, we develop an audit program and say, okay, we think, just as an example, we think there may be risk in the cashiering function. There's a lot of cash collected, checks, et cetera. Okay. What procedures can we put in place as auditors? What audit procedures can we, to determine whether there's a problem? And so, we develop that audit program, and we begin to do testing. And again, it's not 100% testing, however, we have a methodology by which we can sample a number of transactions and determine whether there are any systemic problems in that process. And so, that, in a nutshell, is what that audit process is doing. Once we've completed all of our tests, and we assess the evidence that we've gathered, have we gathered enough evidence to issue an audit opinion to say that the financial statements are in fact fairly presented? If we have, then we issue the audit opinion, which is what you have before you. It's been great to work with an outstanding team of professionals here, that's led by Ms. Williams, because what we find is that we're not having to, to get involved with, with your, what I'll call bookkeeping, with your accounting or bookkeeping, meaning that the transactions are being properly recorded, there's a good understanding of generally accepted accounting principles. I can share with you that, that generally accepted accounting principles for a governmental agency are complex, and they are constantly being updated and issued, new statements are constantly being issued. For example, last year, we talked a little bit about the new pension standard, GASB68, we call it, where pension liability that had never been recorded on your financial statements had to be recorded, and there are some complexities with that. So, there are always accounting complexities. What we value with respect to your team, though, is that they read and understand those accounting complexities, and certainly, we have dialogue about best implementation of some of that. However, we can focus our time on what we're supposed to be focusing our time on. Are there any errors, or is there any fraud that's material to the financial statements? Because that's what you're hiring us to do, to issue an opinion, to say whether the financial statements are fairly presented, and not necessarily to spend a whole lot of time with respect to, did you account for this in the right way, if that makes sense? So, again, just pleased to report that you have received an unmodified audit opinion, and we also issued, so we issued a couple of opinions. One, on the financial statements, and we issued a separate report on internal control and on compliance. And with respect to compliance, our responsibility, we're not lawyers, right? So, our responsibility is to determine whether there was any non-compliance that could have material effect on the financial statements, and we did not identify anything in that regard either. I don't-
Can I stop you just one second?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I just talked to Mrs. Williams, and I wanted to confirm, we're in the high 80s on our pension fund for funding for, for employees, which is absolutely excellent. And, and our pension liability, which has to be reported, is, at this time, very minimal. And so, so I just wanted to give a shout-out and a thank you. We'll, we'll all thank you later, but, but I just think it's important, since you talked about pension liability.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, no. No worries, Mr. Mayor. So, but that's a good observation. On page 14, you can see what your net pension liability is. It's on page 14. Citywide, it's $16.5 million. However, given the scope of, the nature of the, of the number of employees and of your city, I was actually surprised when I was driving here and taking a look again at these financial statements. We audited a number of cities, so I got a lot of numbers in my head, but I was looking, and I was surprised at how low that number was for, for the size of your city. So, so I agree with you that, that you've been doing something right there with respect to that liability. There's an extensive footnote in the financial statements that can put you to sleep, but it's, it's Note 10, and it starts at page, uh, let's see, starts at page 56, and goes for several pages there with a whole lot of information with respect to your pension liability. And so, if you wanted to, to read about that, then certainly, you could do that at your leisure. So, the liability that you do have is called an OPEB liability, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, and let me get back to page 14. Actually, I think we've got to go to the footnote to find that. And so, if you go to page 62, yeah, so I see that actually, this year, it's, it turned into an asset. So, if you go to page 62, and, so if you make promises to provide healthcare benefits after an employee retires, and so actuaries are calculating what that liability is, that liability is not currently required to be reported in your financial statements, but 2018, I believe, you're going to have to record that liability. And that liability, actually, if you look at, if you're at page 62, there's, there's a little table there that shows that you have a net asset of $196,000. That's, that's an accounting rule that's changing. The reason this shows as a net asset currently is because if you, if you pay the amount that you're required to pay for the current year, then the long-term portion doesn't show up as a liability. And without getting into a huge amount of detail, though, we can see that the actuarial accrued liability, and that bottom paragraph there on page 62 talks about that $20.5 million number, so that really is your OPEB liability. So, that's actually a little bit larger than your pension liability. And so, just, I, I don't think that I'm going to go through the financial statements, because, again, there, there's a lot of numbers there, we're in, I guess, February 1st today, and so I know that you receive regular financial statements, but, again, what I can share with you is that the financial information that you're receiving is fairly presented, which should give you confidence in your finance team and the information that's being provided on a regular basis, and so I'm glad to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay. Two last questions. Anyone? Oh. I turned this off so everybody could hear the, the vac, and I'm sorry. Any questions from council? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
It's more, I guess it is a question. So, we, we received an unqualified-
We now call it an unmodified-
Unmodified.
Audit opinion.
Audit opinion. And so, can you, it's, this is just, it's, it gets me every time, is, we call it unmodified, unqualified. It just seems backwards in my mind, and I gave, why would you say you had an excellent audit report?
Yeah.
Or a great audit report, instead of a unqualified or unmodified.
That's a great, that's a great question.
That's a great, that's a great question. And so, the American Institute of CPAs that sets the rules, they have prepared a report and said, this is the report. If, if, if the audit team did everything right in terms of their financial statements, and their financial statements are fairly presented, this is the standard report. And so, if you get the standard report, you've gotten the best report, because that means everything's good. So, that's why we call that unmodified, and they tell us, you call that an unmodified report, because you're getting the standard report, which means it's good. If we have to modify that report for some reason, it's because something went wrong.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't think I've had it explained to me quite that way before. So it's in comparison to what the standard is, if you're all good with what their standard...
You meet that standard, right.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
So, unmodified means you don't want to modify it?
You don't want to modify a report, correct?
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions? Well, I, you know, what can I say? I mean, we've, it's come to be the norm in this city to have an unmodified report. And I just have to tell you that, you know, you want to, you want to get into trouble faster than anything, then your finances are not correct. And ours are correct, and we have that backed up by an auditor. And Sonia, you and your team, Kim, I tell you, I just, I just tell you, it's just one less big headache off the plates of the council members and the city manager and all the department heads when, when we have a fine-tuned finance department. So, I just want to thank you personally for what you guys have done. Mr. Silveira.
One more comment, Mr. Mayor, too.
Yes.
Because I am too going to praise our budget and finance department. In the report that we have on page five, Roman numeral five, there is a certificate from the Government Finance Officers Association, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Presented to the City of Los Manos, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended in June 30th, 2015. And I too have been here, starting on my seventh year now, and it has become the norm that where we don't have findings, and I can remember the first one, and I've said it in previous years, there was a lot of findings. And, and every year since then, it is, it went from a bunch to a few, down to nothing. And so, it is a testament to our finance department and the work they're doing. So, congratulations to them. Thank you, guys, and thank you for your hard work that you guys do to make sure that we keep them on their toes.
Hey, anybody else? Okay. All right. With that, thank you. Yes. Any parting comments? Yes.
Just in relation to the award that Scott just mentioned, this is, that was the second year that we won, that we were awarded the award. We did apply for it, for this CAFER as well, and we just haven't heard back yet, so we're anticipating another win, hopefully, and we'll let you know when it comes through.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Furia.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, staff. Thank you to our audit company there. Very dynamic presentation, appreciate it very much. Really appreciate the work our staff has done. Our financial staff is top-notch, and you guys had a lot of work to do years ago, and we've, we've come a long way to where we are now, which is one of the most financially and fiscally sound cities in the state. We see our neighbors, some of our neighbors are not quite so well. So, pleased to see that, and that's only the process of the staff working constantly on it, and everybody staying on top of it. So we appreciate it very much. Council, we're able to sit here and say thank you very much. We don't work things every day. All we can do is approve of what you're doing, support what you're doing, and thank you for what you're doing. So, with that, I'd like to move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5836, accepting the 2015-16 fiscal year audit reports consisting of the comprehensive annual CAFER, Financial Report, CAFER, the Government Auditing Standards Report, and the Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Program Financial Statements.
Mrs. Lewis.
Second.
Motion by Furia, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5836. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
Carry. Thank you all again. Okay, let's go on to item eight, advisement of public notices. And we have no report. Okay? I'll go with that one. Okay, let's go with item nine, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in February, we will be having Traffic Safety Month, and during the month of February, the Los Manos Police Department will begin a month-long safety event focused on pedestrian safety and distracted drivers. Members of the public can expect to see an increase in traffic enforcement during the month, as we try to improve the safety of our local roadways. So, put your cell phone down. It's actually against the law, so just remember that. We've actually, and also, Mayor, we've rescheduled our MCAG presentation for February 15th. So we will be working with MCAG staff to prepare that presentation for the council's consideration, again, for February 15th.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to item number 10, city council member reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Silveira.
Yeah, Mayor. The only thing I had to report on tonight, and I'm sure you're going to speak a little bit more about it later, is I did attend the Empty Bowls festivities last week, and the mayor always says there's plenty of soup there, a lot of bowls, and I, I love the French onion soup, so I had that, and my wife had the enchilada soup, I think it was, tortilla enchilada soup. So, really good turnout. So, I just want to commend the Rotary on the good job that they've done there, and all their volunteers that do all the work, you know, to provide and set up for a very good and fun event that raises money for a good cause.
Did you leave hungry?
Did not leave hungry, sir.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to Mr. Furia.
Thank you, Mayor. Those who attended the Frank Wiens concert, we had people there from Santa Cruz, from Fresno, Dos Palos. One of my friends who came up from Dos Palos came up to me at the break and said, you're right, he is a world-class pianist. And so, we, it was a wonderful time, very appreciative of the audience, and he gave a beautiful concert. And the Arts Council does a lot, and we want to continue promoting them, trying to do more. We're also in the process of, now, with my high school kids, I take them to the opera, special opera performances, scholarship. We don't have to pay for them, we just have to get the kids there. And they also, the San Francisco Opera brings groups, traveling groups to town, so we're talking with the Arts Council now about possibly partnering with them to maybe bring some kind of opera workshop to the children in Los Manos. And we know that the mayor and Merced County Office of Education bring the symphony to town for the fourth graders, and we just keep trying to provide this enrichment for the people of Los Manos, the children of Los Manos. So it just is a better place, place to live. Next week, the Arts Council is going to have the Trailer Park Troubadours, and if you want to have a good laugh, they, one of their songs, one of my favorites is "It Ain't Home Till You Take The Wheels Off." And they're a really funny group, and we've seen them a couple, a couple of times in Newman. I'm glad to see them come to Los Manos. So, that, I think, is on the 18th of February, and that'll be a fun show. Want to have a good time listening, and it's music, it's a band comedy, it really is fun. Kewanas, those pies are always a welcome addition to the holiday. And then, finally, I want to thank the firemen, our city firemen and our county firemen work together to cook chicken, chickens for us. The choir, Funera's, was very, very successful. We sold over 300 dinners. That's a lot of half chickens to cook. And La Bonita provides the beans, rice, tortillas, and also does a great deal of donating of supplies for us to help make it a financial success that keep, enables us to keep the price down. So it's a very popular dinner. People have told me it's the best chicken they ever ate, so thank you. Assistant Chief Hurley for leading up that team. We appreciate it very much, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
I want to apologize for my absence on the last meeting, and also, thank city staff for sending me to the League of City Conference, where I actually experienced a lot of networking and I met a lot of interesting people. It was a very information-filled conference, and I did enjoy myself a while, along with learning a lot of new information. I also want to thank our city manager for keeping me well-prepared for, for this conference, which I felt a little more confident in, so thank you very much, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Sonia and the financial staff for the outstanding job they've done. Ever since I've been on this council, we've received great reviews from our auditors, and that's a tribute to our staff here in Los Manos. You know, some of the stuff in the report might as well be written in Greek for me, but the monthly, the quarterly reports that we receive from staff help me understand what's going on. But I'm really proud of our staff for being able to put us in the position that we're in as far as monitoring our finances and elevating us to the status of where we are as far as awards that we receive. So, thank you again to our financial staff. I also had the opportunity to attend the Empty Bowls, and you don't go away hungry. The one thing I noticed this year is that I think the youth probably made most of the bowls. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Um, yes.
Yeah, okay. And I did pick a nice bowl, but our city manager snatched it out of my hand. No, I'm only kidding. I picked it up, I put it down, and then he grabbed it, and I wanted it back. I'm just, you know, that's how children are, they want what they didn't, what they couldn't get. But it was a really wonderful gathering, and it's always well-attended, and it's for a very good purpose, and I just want to thank the Rotary Club for putting on that event annually. I also had the opportunity to attend the Frank Wiens concert at the Arts Council, and it's, you know, I love classical music, so it filled my soul that evening. And I noticed that a lot of the musicians sat on the left side, because we all wanted to see his fingering as he was playing that piano. And it was just the whole event to watch his presentation, not just listening to it, but how he presented the music was just a sight to behold. And so, I would encourage anyone, if he comes back again, to attend that concert and to also attend the concerts that the Arts Council offers. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Well, a lot has been said about the Empty Bowls. This year, Rotary donated $3,000 to the canned food drive, and our chief donated his hair. So, it was a great trade, and I think, chief, correct me, it was about $8,000 this year in canned food? Or 8,000 cans, I'm sorry? Yeah. So, 8,000 cans of food was purchased this year, and that was the goal that our chief had set. And so, not to take any thunder away from him, because he's going to probably talk about it anyway at some point, if they collect 12,000 cans next year, I will let them cut my hair. So, so I heard there's already a line, and, and so, we'll see what happens, but the chief has graciously, over the last two or three years, donated his head to the, the raising of food, and I don't think I'll ever attain that goal over the years of how much he has raised. So thank you, chief. And, and so, that's where our money went this year, in, to the Empty Bowls. And so, like I said, no one leaves hungry, so that's good. On behalf of the city council, I contacted Senator Feinstein's office and to ask them to, to help intervene with this father and daughter who are stuck overseas. And they, along with Congressman Costa, are, at a San Francisco office, is, is working diligently to see what they can do to assist. I heard tonight on the news that a, an attorney, an immigration attorney has maybe secured a way to, to bring them home, but we will see. So, I can't, I can't announce that, that that's going to happen or not going to happen, but, but this council did want to weigh in on this, and, and so, that's, that's where we are at this point. We only wish them safe journey and return to our city. As our city manager mentioned, on February 15th, at the next city council meeting, we are, we will have a presentation by MCAG. Anthony Zapata will be here to talk about the recently passed Measure V and, and how the West Side, and I will say, the West Side, can start utilizing funds, and basically, how those funds hopefully can be compiled with state and federal funds to, in order to achieve our projects. Because just the Measure V funds alone are really not going to secure any large projects, because you need the federal fund and state fund match. And so, we're going to be asking questions, and, and he will have a presentation for us. So he's new to MCAG, and I'm looking forward to, to hearing what he has to say. And just a reminder, when I was a principal, old habits die hard. This is Black History Month, African-American History Month, and, and many people are celebrating to, to let individuals know the struggles that were, were conquered so many years ago. So with that, item 11 is off the table, and so I'd like to go on to item 12, closed session, public employee employment. City attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And we were going into closed session. If there's anything to report, I will do so at the end of closed session and return to the dais to report out. Thank you, and have a nice evening.